Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Benner. Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor. Alderman Kraukremer.
Here.
Alderman Keon.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Oshusky and Spencer have been excused.
At this point, we don't have a quorum. We did not hear from Alderman Taylor. If he was planning on coming or not, we will... Could you call him, please, for callee Azee? Are you ready, Alderman Taylor? We started the meeting, but we didn't have a quorum. So if you're ready, we'll move on to the next item. So the first item on the agenda then is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard today? You could step up to the microphone and speak at this time. Mr. Higgins?
Good evening. I don't know if you all received my letter to remove Item 5 and 6 when I come up later on. The reason I request that was when I originally annexed many years ago, I was promised that we would do the infrastructure and nothing was said about homes and nothing was said on time period. With that being said, I would like the city to honor the original agreement. The second thing, building homes, Hagan's Land Development is not a home builder. We're lot development. I build homes, but I'm not Hagan's Land Development. I'm Mike Hagan's, Hagan's Construction. There's a huge difference there. So building those homes, I don't know if I could do that. Let's put it in perspective. Lexington Home gets $21,000 from the City of Manassia every time they build a home. If you're willing to give me $21,000, I can put a home up like you would like because I'd have the money to hang on. $21,000 per lot every time we sell a lot and put a home up? I can easily do that. So with that being said, the other thing, I'm only putting one street in at a time because it's hardship for the city and also myself, okay? So it's not like we're asking for money for a whole 40 acres or 60 acres. We're looking for one street, which makes a huge difference in cost. And depending what the council does here tonight may affect my next phase, which is going to go to the east in June, and that's going to be for all small homes. And if I can't get this settled, the honor of the first agreement, then I can't go forward. And if you've all been in Woodland Hills, if you drive through there, you hit a first roundabout going from the north or from the south going to the north, and then you go up halfway and you hit another roundabout. I layered that whole subdivision to make it look the way it is. And I intend to do that when I cross the creek going east. I'm going to have the most unique lots City of Manassia has ever seen. They'll all be for smaller homes in walkouts. But that can't happen if we have to follow through. I've sold seven lots in the new street already, offers on all seven, and all seven asked the same question. When do I have to build? And I told them, you don't have, you have all the time in the world. I don't think there's one councilperson here would turn around and go by a lot saying that you have to have a home up in three years' time or one year's time. And that was the first questions they asked. Then we got an extension on Woodcrest Heights for two lots, and I have one of those sold already. And it's a big home going there. And this new street, they're all sizable homes. They are not small homes. It's a big tax base. But I'm not in a position to put three homes in a year, nor am I in a position to say, okay, I'm going to sell three lots in a year. But I do have seven confirmed sold lots, and they're going to close by April 1st, if that's if the gravel's all done in time. So any money that you put in there, you're getting seven lots of that back already. So if you want to look at three lots sold per year, not the home issue, I'm ahead by two years. So I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
My name is Chris Klein, 730 Kies. Want to speak a little bit on the walkway that's going, that's on the agenda today. And the development agreement just states that we need to provide a safe passage or a walkway between the new parking structure and Main Street. I think we have an opportunity here to do a very nice, practical, safe walkway for all those new employees that are coming downtown. I encourage you all to reconsider the amount of money that we're spending on this walkway. Think we can utilize those funds more effectively along our waterfront, which we're so much touting right now with the new video we have, and I think it's a better opportunity for us to showcase our downtown if we can invite more people to our waterfront. So I hope that you reconsider the amount of money we're spending on the walkway as it comes up on the agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Sir?
Good evening. My name's Tim Hoff. I live at 841 Kernan Avenue. I'm here also to speak on behalf of Mr. Higgins and the Woodland Development proposal that you have in front of you tonight. I've lived in the Woodland Hills subdivision for three years. I truly believe it is one of the most beautiful areas in the entire city of Manassia and really in the entire Fox Valley. And this proposed addition to the subdivision is going to create a lot of additional tax base for this city and is really going to continue to grow on the great things that are going on in the city right now. During my spare time, I'm the president of the Bank of Kekona. Our bank has financed subdivisions for Mr. Higgins for over 30 years. We truly believe that this is one of the best parcels of land that he has, and we really look forward to this moving forward. This development agreement is a key component to that. So we appreciate the city's support of this and Mr. Higgins in this development and encourage your support of the amendments tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
James Taylor, 340 Broad Street. I asked the mayor, or I asked the clerk to place four items on the agenda. Simple question. And you put it in writing, send it to the clerk, shows up on the agenda. It's unfortunate that our mayor runs interference on this, and it's almost impossible to get something on the agenda. And the mayor's not even involved with putting something on the agenda. It's a state statute. Put it in writing, give it to the clerk, shows up on the agenda. It's unfortunate that I have, I and the people in the 2nd District have to give up the seat, come out here and talk. Simple question. I've had people ask me throughout my district when I was out knocking on doors, they have a problem with the Time Warner. And I wanted the Time Warner issue put with the council meetings, when they're broadcasted, how long they're broadcasted. And there seems to be some problem out there with that. You know, we get $200,000 in franchise fees from Time Warner, and for that, I think the people should be getting the service that they're asking for. And I'm going to ask that this item, I'll keep coming up here if I have to, and if you want me to go to the District Attorney's Office in Oshkosh, I'll do that. Or if you want me to go to the Department of Justice in Madison, Mayor, I'll do that too. But you've got to stop obstructing this government. This government has to function, and you cannot run roadblocks for simple items to be put on the agenda. You should be censured, you should step down if that's the case. Another simple question. I wanted an update on the personal policy handbook. Simple question. Personal policy handbook update, where are we? It always sounds like we're updating it, and we have some new people here working for the city. And simple question. Doesn't appear on the agenda. You said that you forwarded to the personnel chairman. Haven't received a call from the personnel chairman. I'll let me key in on this issue. Another question I had by two other candidates was the voters list. Apparently, there were some changes January 1st, 2016, as a clerk indicated in an email to me. We weren't aware of any of these type of changes. I think that item has merit for discussion, too. Never in my 20 years up here have I had such an obstruction as you, and it's been throughout this whole last year, to get something simple on the agenda. You don't have the authority, Mayor. It goes to the clerk in writing, it appears on the agenda. Stop obstructing the citizens of this community and have some transparent and open government.
So I will respond to that based upon the fact that you are attacking me. I did ask you if you would like to have someone from Time Warner to come to the meeting to discuss that because no one on staff can discuss Time Warner's policies. You never responded. That's why it's not on the agenda. The personnel policy update, I said if you'd like to change something, it should go through the Personnel Committee. I never heard anything back. And the voters list, there's no action item on that, and I didn't know what you wanted, and you wouldn't respond back. So that was why.
It was very simple what I asked you for.
And we're not going to be in a...
You're getting like attorney, the attorney.
Excuse me, Mr. Taylor. I have the floor here.
That's right, and you have, you cannot debate from the chair.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time?
Alex Zalinski, 647 Paris. What my concern with the city is tonight is the walkway that is being voted on from the parking ramp to the new downtown building. This is an extraordinary amount of money to be spending on a walkway. I've asked many of my friends, just asking them what they thought about this extraordinary amount of money being spent on tables and chairs, and they all thought it was ridiculous. Half of them didn't even know about it. What all that was asked was just minimum, minimum was from the city was a walkway and proper lighting for a safe walkway for these people. First part of, first aspect of finance I've ever learned was don't spend money you don't have on things you don't need. And this is exactly what Manassia is doing here. We already have a site where people can gather in downtown, and it's hardly ever used besides hosted events. So I ask of my elected officials to rethink this erratic spending and provide the needs, not the wants, for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time?
Alex Zalinski, 647 Paris. What my concern with the city is tonight is the walkway that is being voted on from the parking ramp to the new downtown building. This is an extraordinary amount of money to be spending on a walkway. I've asked many of my friends, just asking them what they thought about this extraordinary amount of money being spent on tables and chairs, and they all thought it was ridiculous. Half of them didn't even know about it. What all that was asked was just minimum, minimum was from the city was a walkway and proper lighting for a safe walkway for these people. First part of, first aspect of finance I've ever learned was don't spend money you don't have on things you don't need. And this is exactly what Manassia is doing here. We already have a site where people can gather in downtown, and it's hardly ever used besides hosted events. So I ask of my elected officials to rethink this erratic spending and provide the needs, not the wants, for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head, staff, and consultants. The item, first item is the minutes to receive and the communications to receive. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file, minutes to receive A through G and communications H through Q.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Opposed.
opposed, motion carries. Item G is the consent agenda. There are seven items on it this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council meeting of February 15th, the Board of Public Works recommendations from February 15th. First, to accept, the recommendation to accept the citywide stormwater quality management plan. Second, the recommendation to award contract unit 2016-01, the downtown street walkway and electrical improvements to Vinton Construction for $265,487.33. Fourth, the change order, Vinton Construction, Inc., for contract unit 2016-01, the downtown street walkway and electrical improvements. It's a deduct of $21,525. Fifth, the Broad Street Parking Lot Access Plan. Sixth, the second development agreement between the City of Manassia and Woodlands Development LLC and the Nina Manassia Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from February 23rd to authorize the filling of the Fire Chief's position. Does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Zalinski?
Item 1.
Any others? Alderman Nichols?
Item 6.
Do we have a motion for the remaining items at this time? Alderman Zalinski?
Well, the crosswalks, which, that'd be 3, and I suppose 4?
You need to do both if you're going to separate one. Any others? So we have remaining items 2, 5, and 7. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 1?
No.
I mean, I'm sorry, 2, 5, and 7.
There's a motion and a second to approve items 2, 5, and 7. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Do we have a motion for item 1, the minutes to approve from the Common Council meeting of February 15th? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the council meeting for 21516.
There's a second? I have lost them. Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, I had a question last meeting about a reconsider that happened a while back about the parking lot, and then we had a reconsider again that was for the personal property delinquent accounts. And I asked the city attorney at that point, what changed from that, from that parking lot where we were allowed to debate, and then it changed from the previous one that we did, we weren't allowed to debate? And I asked the mayor to put that on the agenda, and I don't see it on the agenda here. So that's why I'm asking the question now.
I'm sorry, I thought you were notified. Alderman Taylor also asked for that, and I notified him, and I thought I had copied you as well, that the city attorney wasn't here, so we would have that on the next meeting.
Nobody's told me anything.
I apologize.
And you scribbled and said it would be on the next agenda.
I apologize, Dan. I had meant, I thought I had...
I thought it was a pretty simple question that she could have answered right away. And you know she's not, she's available by phone and email and everything else. She could have answered that question, and I don't know why it was put off, and she could have answered it that night.
We'll put it on the next agenda, though.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So I can't find my minutes for some reason, but is there anything else on the minutes? Alderman Taylor?
I had the same question, and I had asked the city clerk that we have both videos on the ruling from the attorney for the reconsideration, and certainly hope we can accommodate that. If not, I would like to go ahead of time that we're not going to be able to do that.
Further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item 3 is the recommendation to award the downtown walkway and electrical improvements, Mill Street, Main Street pedestrian link to Vinton Construction. Do we have a motion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. I would like to make a motion that we put these improvements back out for bid and exclusively looking at the bench, the table, the benches, and the seats, and all the appropriate lighting.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you would like to have rebid, I guess.
I would like the whole contract rebid.
But if we rebid the same...
Separating that same, those items.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. That would be a germane motion, correct? Is there a second? Could we get you to repeat the items so that the clerk has the correct?
I would like the table and all the stone chairs, I think it's a couch, there's a recliner, and all the appropriate lighting that's going underneath that table.
Well, we just have to have the lighting under the table?
Yes.
Appropriate one?
I think that's all that's incorporated with the table.
Sure.
Correct? I'd like to have separate, another quote coming out with that stuff.
It has those as alternates.
Just to be clear, this has been bid?
It has been bid, yes.
So you'd be rejecting the bid and then rebidding it according to those...
We should have you, we should have you do this.
I just want to confirm that this has already been bid?
Yes.
So essentially, what you would be doing is rejecting this and all other bids and proposing to rebid the project with the modifications contained in your motion.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to reject the current bid and rebid the project with an alternate for the table? I can't read. Stone furniture, lighting under the table. Is there further discussion on the motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reiki, what would this do to the timeline that we're on for getting this project finished?
Yeah, I'm looking at a calendar right now just to try and figure that out. We would have to re-advertise, obviously. There's a, it's a Class 2 requirement for publication, so that's two, two weeks for, two separate weeks for publishing, and then another week before we can open bids. I don't think that we could get this done in time for the first meeting in April for the Board of Public Works.
And what about the project itself would then be pushed back?
So the project could not be started until early May, and that would be, as I understand, in violation of our development agreement.
And in your experience, when you put contracts out to bid, or when you bid projects and you give the timeframe, which is more crunched now than it was before, what happens to the price of the bids in your experience?
Well, anytime you put time constraints on a project, it is likely to result in higher bid prices because that does constrain the contractor in getting the work done. It reduces any flexibility in their schedule and in their other project, projects that they might be, might have or might be under. Also, rebidding usually doesn't result in lower bids. We haven't done a lot of that. We have done it once or twice, and it really didn't, so I don't think we'll see any savings in that regard. You would have the opportunity to separate those items out of the contract, though. So that's what you gain by this, as, including those as alternate bids.
We would have that opportunity now, but we also had that opportunity several weeks ago when this process was moving through the Board of Public Works.
We did up to a, to a certain extent. We could not exceed the 15% change, though. And with the elimination of the items that were suggested, that did exceed that 15% level.
Yes, but before that, I remember going through the, the project list, and I specifically remember Alderman Benner requesting some alternate bids during the process.
Correct. I thought you were talking about last week's meeting. Okay, yes.
So we had an opportunity to present alternate, to offer alternate, alternatives at that point?
Correct.
Okay. And given that we had that opportunity already once before, and that we, by not completing this project on time, if we rebid the project, we would be in violation of our agreement, and construction would then result at a time when 300 people will be moving through that space every day, at least two times a day. I, I can't support rebidding the project.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Reiki, help me out with this. At some point, we took out a bunch of trees, a bunch of shrubs, and we took that out of the project, and we were going to do that ourselves. And then we took out, looks like, eight outdoor picture frames.
Correct.
And those were, I'm looking for an average here, probably 3,500 for one, 1,700 for another. How could we have taken out these items out of this without falling below that 15% or whatever, just, you know, removing these items, and now Alderman Zalinski wants to remove a couple items, and we can't do that?
The, the elimination of those, of those two items amounted to $21,525. The maximum that we can change the contract by, if the lower alternate bid is accepted, is $39,823. So we have an additional, under $18,000 that can be removed.
How much was that?
An additional, some, some amount under $18,000.
Is there any other way you've ever seen this done before, that if something had to get pulled out, that, and it came over that amount, that we've done that before?
Not to my knowledge, because the city attorney would advise us not to do that. There is an, an exception. You could declare an emergency, which I think we did over 20 years ago on one project, and it truly was an emergency involving some of our sanitary sewer items that were under distress. But I can't recall any other instance.
So we could pull out the community table, I think, and I don't know where you're going to, how you're going to figure out that price, because it's anywhere from, for that, that table is anywhere from 17,8, 19,5, 14,3, $14,000, $17,000, $19,000. So how do we do that as far as that number? What number do we use?
Well, we'd have to look at what the total alternate bid was. First of all, look at the total base bid, and then what the change with the alternate bid was with the various bids that we did receive, and then compare those with whatever else once would be eliminated from the contract.
Is that something you can do tonight while the meeting goes on?
I could.
I mean, you're saying we can, we can eliminate $18,000 at this point, correct?
Something under $18,000, yes.
Uh-huh. And Alderman Zalinski asked for the, the stone couch, the large stone couch, the small stone couch, and the community table and the under table lighting. So if we can revisit this and come back, you have some numbers.
Okay, it's actually something a little over $18,000. I'm sorry, $18,298.
But I wonder what number we use on the, on the bids here for?
We'd be using the numbers for Vinton. Correct.
We would, but I would also have to evaluate the other, the numbers from the other bidders because... because I don't think that, well, because they may, they have different amounts for the, for the table and the stone furniture, for the landscape plantings, and for their alternate bid.
I think the other problem with eliminating the stone furniture is something has to go in its place. So it'd be pretty hard to eliminate the stone furniture. The table you could potentially eliminate. We'd have to eliminate both the lighting and the table, though, if you were going to do that. I don't know if that would hit the number that you need to do.
That would exceed what we have available. Using Vinton's numbers, that would exceed what we have available. And the rest, I'd have to do some calculations. Vinton, using the alternate bid, they're approximately $10,000 lower than the next low bid, but then I didn't, we didn't do any analysis on each individual item, because we didn't know. We did for the, for the two change order items, but not for these other items.
So if it's the desire of the council, we could pass on items three and four until Director Radke has an opportunity to look at those? Is that the desire? Would we have unanimous consent from the council to do that or not? Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. Mark, if we put back in the stuff that we eliminated, could we remove the furniture? What did we, I don't, I can't find that list in here as I start scrambling this. I would like to have everybody give me an opinion why this furniture is needed, because I've been out helping my son campaign. I didn't hear one person in my whole district say, "Hey, $40,000 worth of furniture? That's a good idea in the middle of a walkway?" And I, I tried to move, remove this stuff last meeting, and that was three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, because we didn't have, we only had two meetings last month, and nobody wanted to put it back out for bids then. Now all of a sudden, we got all this stumbling blocks, and all of a sudden, it's a time limit that we gotta get this stuff done now. I hate this stuff that all of a sudden, it's a time limit, we gotta get it done now. We didn't talk to the developer if we really needed this. If the walkway isn't finished, nothing happens? We're gonna be in violation of the agreement? I find that hard to believe.
That is what the agreement says? Does it say April 15th, or what? I don't remember exactly what the date is. April 30th?
But they wouldn't consider going the other way if we eliminated the furniture for a little while?
We're at where we are today as a result of a process that started last summer, right? We had approval of the TIF project plan, which identified the cost for this walkway and street crossing as part of the TIF expense. That was followed up by a process that involved the two adjoining property owners. The aldermen from, that represented that area were invited to participate. We had a representative of the Landmarks Commission. We had staff participating. We had the developer and a representative of faith on this committee. We selected this design group to put together a plan. There are design professionals that put together a plan that had an integrated concept. And if you start pulling pieces out of this thing, it ends up, what do you have? You have a jumble of stuff that has no cohesive design or function. And we've, we've had this discussion. The plan was presented here by the consultant. When was that? In January? Early January?
Sure.
We've had it through the Board of Public Works, and now we're here today when we've got the bids ready to go, and oops, now we're gonna change everything. Why do we always step backwards? And if this was a consideration, it should have been brought forth in a manner that could be addressed at the last meeting.
I did bring it forward at the last meeting, but there was no biting on it, and then there was no bids. Now all of a sudden, I hear from an alderman, "Oh, time's up. We gotta do it now." We could have had the bids out already. They would have been coming back at this point, and we could decide. I'm just a little shocked that we go down that street, and all of a sudden, it ends, it just ends in wood chips, and we'll talk about, like Alderman Taylor said, we talk about the riverfront improving that. There's no improvement onto that. But we can decide that we want to spend $40,000 on cement furniture. Just a little disturbing to me. So, Mark, on that question, could we put that, take, put that stuff back in and get to the $40,000?
You would be exceeding the maximum by $226.90, if I've calculated correctly.
Okay, well, we'll hang some lighting somewhere, and we'll be fine. So we'll see how this boat goes, and I can make that amendment to it.
So, so the motion that's on the floor right now, Alderman Taylor, do you have another comment about the motion that's on the floor?
I didn't hear the motion.
Okay, so the motion that's on the floor right now is to reject the bid and to rebid, eliminating the table, the stone furniture, and the lighting associated with the table.
And what else did Alderman Zelinski say at the end?
He's gonna make a different motion if this one fails, is what I believe you said, correct?
I just want to make a comment here. I met with the developers. I walked through that walkway with the developers. We walked across the street, talked about taking down those houses, and all the developer ever said was, "We want a safe and well-lit walkway." They didn't say about having any type of living room or kitchen out there. And these are gonna be items that are gonna obstruct the flow of that walkway. If you got people walking two, three, four, grass, talk to some of our crews, and the unique equipment that they're gonna have to clean the snow out of this is gonna be shovels. And now you're putting more staff time in, having these obstacles for them to move around, and probably seven, eight, nine months of the year that they won't even be used, and it'll just create a problem. I'm all in favor of enhancing our waterfront, enhancing our square, but putting this type of money between two buildings, that's, it's just a walkway. We don't know, we know that there's a serious bird problem there. We don't know what type of staffing is gonna clean up this bird mess every day, every half a day, every couple hours, if people are gonna eat their lunch there. There's a serious problem. Something my brother said after he left office up here. He said, "You know, it's all right when staff or the mayor or somebody wants to make a change, it goes through, but when a council member wants to make a change, boy, then it gets tough." And we've already made changes to this, and it went through, and no problem. We took, we took away the outdoor picture frames. By the looks of that, that's eight of them, that, about $1,300 a piece, $10,000, boom, we took that out. We took out the plantings and said, "Yeah, the city will do these. No problem." Took them out. Now, and Alderman tries to make, Alderman Zelinski tries to make some changes here. You've heard it from the public out here tonight. We all heard it throughout our campaigns. You know, this type of dollar amount for, for that area just doesn't cut it. If we are gonna be the, your place on the water, let's put it on the water. Let's enhance our waterfront. Let's make it even better. These type of dollars don't come around every day, and we all know that this is way over budget to start with. It should have been sent back when it came in over budget, especially with the labor wasn't even presented to us, how much the labor was gonna cost. That alone, right there, it should have been shut down and sent back. And when things come over this far over budget, sometimes you need to stop and make changes. That's why we're up here.
Director Kyle, do you know what the budget was in the TIF plan for this?
$337,000.
Okay, and we've spent $265, plus the amount for the consultant, which is less than 337?
Right.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't forget, we're also deducting the $21,525 for the-
Yes.
For the concrete. I just want to comment a bit on the process, and when this was all presented, I struggled with the payers that were going to go in, and from a cost perspective and from long-term maintenance aesthetics. I asked for an alternate bid. We put it out there. We got the alternate bid. We're accepting it. After that, when we got our numbers, we removed other pertinences, as was articulated here. We talked about the snow removal process. Director Radke discussed all that. Through the whole process, we went through everything. Alderman Zelinski did ask for some things at our last meeting, and if I recall, it got voted down. So I think the whole process ran its course, in my opinion. And there's some things that I struggle on if we do this, certainly from an integrity perspective with our developers, that we had an agreement with them, that we would provide, that we would provide this, and, and we also agreed on a date that it would be done. So even if we don't, even if we were to reject this bid at this time and send it back out, and we're able to get a contract in time to maybe get a sidewalk, and there's still other things that are going to have lead times on them, such as lighting and other alternate furniture we may put in, things like that, and we still won't be able to turn over a finished product. And when they have a grand opening for this facility, it's going to be a grand opening. And if we don't have our program together from the city to show that we're a participant in this process, and we do what we said we were going to do, and we have, this is part of being, part of the whole rejuvenation of our downtown with this building, I mean, how is that gonna make us look, even? And we ran the process. We went through it all. We got our questions answered. We removed things. We saved money. We're coming in under our original projected budget. And it seems to me, we're in a pretty good place. And, you know, there is some reasonable arguments that when somebody hasn't been through the process, or you look at it, to say that this does seem like a lot of money. When I saw $17,000 for some concrete furniture, I thought, "Wow, you know, that's, that's a lot of money." But it's also something that we agreed to, and we ran the process, and here we are, final approval after, you know, over two months of debating this and running it through the process and the bids and everything. I just, I struggle with the fact that now we want to kick this to the curb and put it back out there again and see what, see what we end up with, and are really, are we really gonna save anything? I struggle with that. And I don't have a lot of emotion over the furniture. I think I expressed my concerns over original, when they were showing furniture about vandalism or some theft with some, some furniture or something like that, and we came back with concrete furniture. That's not gonna get legs real fast. It's gonna be here forever. So, I don't know, in my opinion, I'm done with this, and, and other than giving my final vote to approve it and go forward and, and do what we said we were going to do. Thank you.
Alderman Zelinski?
No, I disagree with some of that, but we have no idea what this little walkway is going to turn into. We have these discussions, and we want to move some of this stuff out of town. We didn't like some of the people that were hanging out down there. Well, we're opening up a little park. We might have some people hanging out down there that they might not want down there. And that might be coming, turn into a little smokers, smokers' stretch there between there, because there's a lot of companies that don't allow smoking even in their parking lot. So this would be the nice place to maybe turn that into that, and put the benches there and have their little smokers' corner, and then all of a sudden, we're gonna, you guys are gonna be back down the road and say, "Well, maybe we gotta set up some rules there. No loitering and no smoking in that area." Nobody thought of that at that point, and who's gonna clean these benches? We can't even clean the town square some of the time, and now we're gonna, we're just gonna spend extra time on this one? This should, this stuff should be in the town square. You drive by in Manasha, and all you see is two picnic tables there with treated wood on them. More people are gonna see that than they are going to see those benches sitting in between two buildings there.
Alderman Taylor?
From what I understand, we have kept our agreement. It wasn't supposed to be a living room or a kitchen, like I said. It was supposed to be a safe, well-lit walkway. That's all this company wanted, between the parking ramp and their building. Now, if you have, I think that table holds 14 people, you have this table full of people hanging around, or kids hanging around, you can't control who's hanging around there, you're gonna hear from this company, and they're gonna say, "Hey, we don't like what's hanging out there in that walkway. So why should we even have that, let alone the bird problem with the bird droppings? That's how we're gonna be judged every day. People walk up by, and they go, "Oh, boy, look at that. Like, I want to have my lunch there." And we all know to clear, clean bird droppings. Our city sanitarian will tell you that that's a whole different way that you gotta treat that stuff, let alone the protection of our employees. And it's not just a quick, quick wipe. There's some sanitation issues there that have to be addressed. And that's how we'll be judged out there every day, by having this furniture full of bird droppings. And it is a serious problem out there. Trust me on that one. And again, all they wanted was a walkway with, maybe Alderman Zelinski's right, we'll move the furniture down the road then. Maybe we'll put the furniture in the square someplace that we find a better situation. Maybe we'll have to do that. Maybe that'll be our, if we have people hanging around that we don't want, or if the bird droppings are so bad, we're gonna probably have to move the furniture.
We have a motion on the floor in a second.
I'm not worried about the flying friends. I take plenty of walks down there. There are four-legged friends that lift their leg at every opportunity downtown, and I'm concerned about it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to reject the bids and rebid with several alternates. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion fails on roll call two, four.
So do we have a motion for item three at this time? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the recommendation to award contract unit 2016-01 Downtown Street Walkway and Electrical Improvements. Mill Street, Main Street, pedestrian link from Broad Street parking ramp to Main Street with for Vinton Construction Incorporated in the amount of $265,487.33.
And the attorney says it would be Jermaine. If you'd like to do the alternate, at the same time, you could do both of them combined.
And change order for Vinton Construction, contract unit 2016-01, the Downtown Street, same project, with a deduct of $21,525, and that's change order number one.
Is there- Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. We'll run both items separated. So right now, we're on the recommendation to award. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call four, two.
Now we're looking at item four, the change order, the deduct of $21,525. Is there any discussion on the deduct? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call six, zero.
Item six is the second development agreement between the City of Manasha and Woodlands Development LLC. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve the second development agreement between the City of Manasha and Woodland Development LLC.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Director Kyle, Mr. Higgins is here this evening, and he also submitted a letter requesting some changes to the agreement. His request specifically is that items number five and six be removed, and each of those, item five- Item five asks that he, that Woodlands Development pay specialist assessments on no less than three lots per year. And then item six requests that Woodlands cause the construction of three homes each year. So could you talk about how removing those would affect the agreement?
Well, it's, it's more so an effect on the city's costs of development and that type of thing. So the number five, the city, under the deferred assessment program, advances the funds for the installation of the infrastructure. And those funds are repaid upon the sale of a lot. And that's just a brief summary of that program. So as, as lots are sold, the investment that the city made in the infrastructure and able to support that development comes back at the point in time where the lot is transferred from the developer to the prospective homeowner. And the city will be borrowing funds for this project. And so we're counting on having a source of revenue to pay that, pay that back. And hence, the reason for that provision being in here. And as long as the lots are being sold to third parties, it would not have an impact on the developer having to go out and finance those assessments that are due. So there is a performance element of this that's associated with the special assessments. On the next item, the construction of three homes, this was sort of carried over from the development agreement that we entered into with Vans. And as Mr. Higgins indicated, there's a little bit different scenario here in that he is, in this instance, acting as the developer, not the developer and the home builder. The implication of this coming out of the agreement is less substantive on the city. We wouldn't be necessarily assured that we would be receiving new taxable value as a result of that development. But at the same token, we are not exposed to any direct expense either. So of the two, item six would have less impact upon us if it were withdrawn.
Okay, so I'm going to summarize what I just heard. And if I'm speaking incorrectly, please let me know. The city would finance the money to pay for the initial infrastructure. Then that, those monies would be paid back to the city through lot sales.
There would be an assessment created on each of those lots. And then when those lots are sold, that money needs to, the assessment needs to be repaid to the city.
Okay. And you stated that item number six, Mr. Higgins is not a builder, so to speak, and Mr. Higgins stated that as well. So to remove number six would not influence, would not affect the city's finances.
Other than-
In a negative way.
Perhaps wouldn't achieve an additional increase in taxpayers.
Okay. And, Mr. Higgins, could we hear from Mr. Higgins? I just have one question for him.
Do we have unanimous consent to hear from Mr. Higgins? Mr. Higgins? So I was going to look and see if Mr. Higgins was still back there.
Surprised I'm that quiet, Mayor?
No, I just didn't see you back there. You were behind Mark, actually.
Thank you for being here this evening, Mr. Higgins.
Thank you.
I just have, I understand what you're saying, that you're not in the business of building homes, so to speak.
No, I'm not.
And I also think that we're, we both want to benefit from what's about to happen here. You stated before that you have offers on seven lots.
I have seven offers already in there. And I have another offer on Woodland Crest where we just created two lots. One of those are gone. And when the road limits are gone, one heck of a home's going in there. All, that section is all for big homes, nice-looking. And the other thing, what I brought up, I wanted to get onto the other side so we could have smaller homes. So I'd have a market for the big home and the small home. And I could have fought the annexation because the town chair, Allison Blackmire, says, do not annex. And I was promised all the infrastructure. And I didn't want to fight. So I annexed. And I've never been up here fighting with the city. When we put Woodcrest Heights in, the city didn't have any money. I did not ask the city to pay my interest. The Bank of Coconna said the city didn't have any money. They'll go out on a limb and they'll give me the money to put that street in. And you have collected a pile of money on that street. In fact, I pay ten thousand dollars a year in taxes on lots and I'm still sitting with up there. So I think we want to be good neighbors. And I think you'd be so proud when we go to the other side. You're never going to see anything like that. We're going to layer it. But I need your help. And by only putting one street in at a time, it's not birdiness for many millions of dollars. So I appreciate the help.
And I think with this agreement, we're stating, we would be stating that the, the city or the taxpayers are willing to help you. We just want to be sure that the taxpayers are, are paid back for their investment here. So you said you already have offers on seven lots and-
Seven lots.
And this-
And one on the other one.
And this agreement would require you to sell three lots per year.
Per year.
So as you stated, you're already ahead of the game.
Yes, too. It's amazing to turn around. I'm astonished. I'm jumping up and down, I never had such good feelings. I mean, there's just mud out there and I've got seven lots sold.
Well, that's great.
And I walked out with those people with, they were in the muck. And we walked it because they didn't understand. And when I got all done with them, I'm sure some, I don't know if all our clothes came clean. It was that bad.
Well, I would like to make an amendment to this agreement to remove item number six, which is the item that would, that asks you to build to cause the construction of the homes every year. So I would like to make an amendment to remove item number six from the agreement.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Discussion on the amendment? Alderman Nichols? Anyone else? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greg, do you have a comment or a thought on, on this at all?
Well, just following my earlier discussion, I, I don't feel that removing item six will have a material impact on us. It, it gives us some additional sort of support for the performance of the development. But this isn't like we're in a TIF district or something like that, that that performance is necessary. The tax increment from that performance is necessary to pay down our expenses. So I'm not terribly uncomfortable with eliminating number six.
Peggy, could you?
What I need you to know is that we need, we can't have our taxpayers burdened by this debt. I don't have, we don't have that in our plan. And if we aren't, if we don't have a commitment that, the number five, I think, as Greg said, is the most important. But the, or the value that's added by the houses adds more. I'm not trying to influence your decision. I just need you to know that this is not something in the plan that the general taxpayers would be plan, planning on part of the tax levy. And I, I don't believe we have room on our tax levy for that commitment.
We're receiving taxes on those, on the lots themselves. And how many lots would it take to make up for if he had sold without homes on them? And I don't think we're going to wait too long on homes. But how many homes, how many lots would it take to make up the difference for homes not being built on them? There's obviously a huge difference in tax revenue.
Well, the property has yet to be, the plat has yet to be recorded, correct, Mike?
Correct.
Yeah, so we're just taxing the raw land. And is that an ag use?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so there's very limited taxes that are currently being generated today. And so once, once that subdivision is developed, then, you know, it'll migrate out of that ag use status. So we will be gaining some benefit there. And I wasn't understanding the other piece of your question.
I'm not sure I articulated it very well, but, obviously, it'd take an absorbent amount of lots to be sold to make up the difference if we had homes sitting on these lots. And at what point does, if we don't build homes on these lots, at what point does this become a burden to the city? That would be difficult for us to absorb.
Ag use value, it's negligible what, what we're receiving. So if we get even one lot that's going to develop, we'd be ahead of the game.
But I'm just saying, even with the money that we're financing for this, you saying one, just the sale of one lot would make up for what our investment, for what we have to pay off?
No, no. What we're saying is that to cover our infrastructure costs, we need to realize the, the special assessments. Those special assessments need to be paid back on three lots in order to cover our cost of borrowing.
Okay, okay. That makes more sense. And it looks like we're going to have that, is what you're thinking?
At least for the short term, for the seven that he has spoken for.
Yeah, okay. If we had a motion to postpone on this, because I think I'd like to have some additional discussion to understand it more, how does this affect what Mr. Higgins is trying to do going forward? This time it hits that for two more weeks.
It's an impact more for the developer than for us.
Should I answer that?
Yes, please.
Thank you for allowing me to answer that, a very important question. This piece of property, I was talking to Director Grant Kyle, I would think well over a year and a half in the makings. Going by past experience, what the City of Manasha has done for me, they put the infrastructure in, as I sell the lots, I pay it back. Going underneath that assumption, I already have the sewer and water and everything in. I got to pay the bills. I went on that assumption because that's what you've done for me in the past. And that required me to build homes that was not in my development agreement when I came in. And now it's news to me, the requirement to build those homes. And the same thing, I want you to really ask yourself, Kevin, if you were going to go out and buy a lot tomorrow and I told you had to build in a year, would you buy that lot? And you had a home to sell. And your home is five hundred thousand, it's going to take maybe two years to sell. You see what that does to me and you see what it does to the city, not getting the money back?
My only concern is that we have monies out there that all of a sudden, we may become responsible for. You know, we are responsible for it, but if we don't get our return to-
I can answer that.
Sure, go ahead.
The bank wants to answer that, too. Because they're in the original investment on the land. It isn't just a pressure of the city for me to move those lands. What happens, and I'm going to tell you straight to your face, when it gets down to that point, I'll order price of those lots and get them gone. And then you will get your money. I have no choice. I don't think he'd let me get away with it. So the other thing I've done for the city, I kept all the lot prices up, up there in Woodland Hills. I have sold those for less money. But we paid the transfer fee. So when we sell a lot for eighty thousand, you tax it for eighty. I paid the transfer fee, but I didn't sell those lots for eighty. So I'm getting this going and I kept your tax structure up there. So the way I work it, all of a sudden, if I have to dump those lots at the low price, you might, you might get your money back right away, but you're going to lose money on taxation. And I've been working for you people for a long time that way. And I would think, Mr. Hoff can tell you how I've done that. He's been part of it.
I remember you struggling for a little bit a few years ago, yeah.
But he'll tell you what I did to get them gone. And you've got a partner here. You're going to be so amazed when we cross that creek. We're coming in with earth movers. See, the problem is, you have Lexington Homes and you have Vans opening up, okay? I have to have different style lots to sell. And what's going to happen over there, if you follow through on this, will be in there in June, be second to nothing in the valley. We're going to move a hill and build all ravines. Woodland Hills, by the way, those ravine lots weren't there. There's a big pile of ground way up in the back. I made ravine lots, which sold those lots immediately because they were ravined. Otherwise, who knows, they still not, might not have a home on it. So I, I know what people are looking for and I work that way. Thanks for giving me your time.
Sure, my pleasure. Mr. Mayor, you have a problem with this?
The item six?
Yes.
I would agree with Director Kyle, that I think that we can live with that.
Okay.
Item five, we might want more discussion on before we talk about that much further. I guess the reason being on item five is that we could have to put those funds on our levy then at some point if he doesn't sell enough lots each year.
That was my concern, and that's why I was asking the question, why I asked our, I asked Peggy.
So if I, if I did my math correctly, Director Stino, it looks like twenty-five thousand dollars or so assessment per lot. If I'm looking at four hundred eighty divided by, I mean, four hundred eight divided by seventeen thousand, I mean seventeen lots. So, so you could be looking at up to seventy-five thousand dollars that would, could land on our tax roll if he doesn't sell enough lots in a particular year.
So when would that happen, if that were to happen?
If we borrowed the money this year, the first payment would be two thousand. If we borrow before August thirty-first of this year, the first payment would be next March. After, it would be the following March.
And when would it have to go on the levy, if that was the case?
If it's going to go on the levy, if the payment is due March one, March fifteen, two thousand seventeen, we would have to approve it this fall with the budget for two thousand seventeen. If the monies weren't needed until after August thirty-first and it could be borrowed later, then it would be for the two thousand eighteen budget. But it would be every single year.
That's the difficult nature on item five.
That's kind of the part I'm, I'm struggling with.
Yeah, so we should work on six first.
Yeah, okay.
And we can go on to item, the rest of it, or as-
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Amended.
Thank you, everybody.
Alderman Zelinski?
Greg, is this driven by what we did with Vans?
Greg, could you grab the microphone?
This is, except for items five and six, this is pretty much the formula that was used to develop the whole, residentially developed the whole of the east side of the town of Manasha. Very, very small portions of that area on the east side developed without relying on the city's deferred assessment policy. So, so these provisions were made for our development agreement with Vans and now were sort of brought into this agreement. And, you know, I've sort of acknowledged that the character of Vans is a little bit different than the character of Woodland Developments.
So are five and six in Vans, there's six in Vans construction right now?
Yes.
So we're going to be changing these every time a developer comes through?
Well, every one of them has been a little bit different, depending upon, you know, how big an area, what kinds of improvements were needed, et cetera.
So Peggy, were we talking about the monetary impact on five or six? I don't want to discuss five. We're discussing six right now. We're discussing six right now. Monetary impact on sixes.
Monetary impact on six would be less taxes guaranteed to be received. So, the tax levy, you'd have more property to tax if there's a building built on the property faster. But number five would cover the debt service, which is why we set it up the way we did.
I know bigger lots are harder to sell. Everybody's, Lexington, we reduced the size of the lots, which made them easier to sell. And I don't know, Vans are, they're small lots, too, aren't they?
They aren't as large as these, no.
And when we talk about taxes, you know, for, for city purposes, if the home is, um, 200,000, that's about 2,000 bucks in city taxes on that home.
Yeah, well, I remember a few meetings ago, I think, why don't, why don't we start getting out of this special, this deferred assessment business like the rest of the townships or villages around us? You know of anybody else that has them, right now, or neighboring us?
I'm not aware of any neighboring us. There are a few others out there. And I had made inquiry with the border realtors. There's some up in the Green Bay area, and I believe Little Shoot may have started something as well. But I, I don't have the specifics on the set hand. And, you know, I don't wanna belabor this, but there is a historical component to why we have this, and that relates to the fact that the city was competing for development with the towns, and their development costs are much lower than what they are in the city. Ditches versus curb and gutter, you know, all kinds of differentials in, in the level of improvements. And plus, the fact that the city provides a broader range of services, our tax rates are higher, so it was felt that in order to compete in the marketplace, the city had to do something that would incentivize developers. And this notion of the city actually sort of acting as the bank for this infrastructure cost was something that was attractive and has worked to get the development that we've experienced on the east side. And quite honestly, without that, I think a lot of the development that's in the city today would now be town or village a harrison.
Do we get all of our dollars back at some point, at the end of this whole story?
I'm not aware of any development where we failed to recoup our, our investment through the deferred assessments. Mark, are you aware of it?
I'm not aware of, I, I don't know how much the interest costs played into it, that's the part that I'm not sure of, but I know that we did recover our costs, contract costs.
Right, our infrastructure, yes. And the deferred assessment, you know, as part of that, the city does, uh, cover that, the interest cost for five years. So, that's part of the incentive that's included, you know, with the deferred assessment. And then after that five-year period, the developers charge our cost of borrowing plus a percent.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
This states, uh, this is a second development agreement between the city of Manasha and Woodlands Development LLC, is that correct, Greg?
That's correct.
Okay, and this was all agreed upon by Mr. Higgins in your department?
This, well, save for these two points, five and six. And the first development agreement was for that area down by the large pond, and that, there's some issues there with the roadway and that sort of thing that we're still trying to work through. So, this, even though it's with the same development entity, it's a completely different, uh, development area.
I'm not in favor of taking five out, out of this document.
So, right, right now, there's, um, an motion to amend on the floor to remove item six, requiring the construction of homes to be completed when it occupies, what is, I don't remember before.
37, 27.
Oh, construction of three homes by December 31st, 2017. Any further discussion on that item? So, this is just to amend the original motion. Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Well, she carried on roll call five, one.
Okay, now, the motion is on the floor as amended. It still includes that there shall be payments on three lots per year commencing in 2017 at this point. Alderman Nichols?
I do have one question. How many lots are there?
Seventeen.
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 I could've made it four.
Director Stino, can you talk a little bit more about what your concern was? I understand that having a home on a lot makes that lot more valuable than it is vacant, but we're also talking about the, the special assessment, assessment costs covering the-
Our payments.
The debt service payments. So, can you talk about that a little more?
That's, that's the part I was referring to. So, let's just say it's 400,000, and there's 17 lots. One would, if, if they're about the same, um, size lots and attributes, you're looking at approximately 23,500 in special assessments per lot. If we have three of those, if we get paid for three special assessments on an annual basis, that will cover the debt service cost, because otherwise, we borrowed this money in 2016, and until 2021, there's not one payment. That means the taxpayers would pay those, um, debt service payments. But if there's at least payment on three, if three of the special assessments are paid off each year, that would provide the money to pay for the debt that was incurred for the improvement.
So, you're, you, you're saying that the special assessments paid on the sale of three, on three lots would cover the debt service payment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I thought you were, I thought there was a concern that it wasn't going to, and-
No, that's how we came up with the three lots, is by just running some preliminary numbers on borrowing that kind of money and what the debt service payment would be annually.
Okay, thank you.
So, the motion is on the floor as amended. Is there further discussion? I don't know if we wanna hear from Mr. Higgins, if we leave that in, what that means to him.
Are we talking on homes or number of lots per year?
No, we're talking on requiring a sale of three lots per year. We, we agreed that we wouldn't require you to actually construct a home on any of those lots.
Okay.
So, that part we took out.
Right now, I'm two years ahead of the whole program. Actually, more than that. So, with that requirement, um, if it means to go along with that, then I have another question. I'm a pessimist, and I have a right to be, because I've been out here for a long time, okay? Let's say it doesn't happen, then you're gonna want me to pay the interest that you're paying, and that's not a problem for me either. So, that takes off the muscle on the city as well. I mean, you're being assured. And I hate to bring this up again. I never would have annexed to the city if I had that requirements. We did all of this so far, and no one's ever asked that. Now, I understand what happened with Vans, he's the new program that came in, but he didn't annex acres and acres and acres and acres. He came in and bought that after that was there already. To answer Dan's question, why do we do this? Because you had agreement, Dan, and that's why I came in. I could have broke the annexation. Hurlington Clark said they wouldn't lose, but I was talked, I was promised, and that's why we're here. And I've really done great. So, to answer the question is, do I pay interest afterwards? No one's brought that up.
So, the way I understand it, it's five years-
I don't go to jail, I don't think.
Five years interest-free, and then in, interest after that, correct?
I don't see a problem on, on those lots.
But if, the problem is if, the way it's set up now is if you don't sell at least three per year, so if you're ahead, if you're at seven, you wouldn't have to sell anymore for two-plus years.
Mm-hmm.
And then you would have to pay whatever special assessment was required for additional lots if you didn't sell them, the full $20,000 or whatever that was, correct?
Twenty-three, five, right. It just, it just wouldn't push it into interest mode. Those special assessments, the value of those special assessments would be due and payable each year.
So, if you're three, you hadn't sold anymore after the seven, you'd have to pay-
I understand that.
Okay.
You somewhat had me over a barrel, other than a lawsuit, not honoring the first agreement that I came in. And I didn't wanna bring this up, and I'm not talking lawsuit. What I'm gonna bring up is, what are you gonna do? Come take the lots at 23,000 apiece and put it on auction block come January 1? If that didn't happen, you guys haven't gone that far. So, all of a sudden, it don't happen, right? And we come and say, Mr. Higgins? Yes? You haven't honored your agreement. You're two lots behind on assessment. We want you to pay 46,000. And if I don't, what are you gonna do? Put it on the auction block, right? Whereas, if I were in the position, when it comes to that, if I could pay the interest until the lot's sold, you're better off that way than you are bringing it up to the auction block. When you start doing this, you gotta go a little further. Or I'll say, yes, I'm happy with this, let's go with it. And then you can worry what happens further on down the line. Not that it's gonna happen, because I'm not gonna let it happen. I'm just saying, legal-wise, ask the Mr. Attorney, what's he gonna do? And it takes you a year to get that in court, and if I pay a little payment, it takes you a year and a half. I know the law, too, in which these people have not taken into consideration. I wanna protect the city, but I want you to protect me as well. What would the attorney do?
Well, assuming first you'd be notified that you're in breach of payment.
Mm-hmm.
Try to reach some sort of an agreement that way, and if we can't, then, uh, suit would be commenced. If there's a judgment taken, then that would become a lien against the property.
Well, that's okay, too. Finally, it sells, I pay that, too. So, I'm happy with you have you. It's not, you gave me that answer. You know? But you know where I, I was coming from? What, what is the answer? And we'll sit down and we'll discuss it if it ever happens. I, I'm not gonna leave. We have about another 80 acres plus to develop for the city. And in order to continue this, I have to change design, and that's what I'm gonna do when I come back to the same committee in three months from now, wanna jump the creek. And, uh, it's, you're gonna be in awe. You have something that no one else has. And if I can't work out an agreement with the city, the banks, because of Mr. Obama, the regulators come in, they're not gonna borrow the land developers right now. No land developer can go, am I right, Tim? No land developer can go get a loan, basically, for a subdivision?
Much tougher.
And that's where the problem, that's where the city wins, and I win.
So, it sounds like you can live with the agreement as amended here.
Sure, now that we all talked it out, I wanted everyone to know what the situation's gonna be if it doesn't happen.
And we'll just all be optimistic that it is gonna all work, right?
Okay, I'll change Pete to an O. Thanks.
Is there, is there further discussion on the motion as amended, then? Alderman Zalinski?
And at the end, if there's a problem with it, it could be amended again.
Could be.
Okay.
No further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call five, one.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, Mr. Higgins. It worked much better that you were here, so-
Well, thanks. Thanks for letting me talk.
Um, item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for February 18th through March 3rd. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 218 to 3316 in the amount of 1,387,762 and 46 cents.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications. Do we have a motion for those that are recommended approved, for approval? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period as listed under approved, and the police department's memo dated March 3rd, 2016.
There's a motion, a second. Is that you on here, Dan, or is that a different Dan Zalinski?
So-
Okay, that's what I was thinking, it had the-
I have a second, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure if we had to have you abstain or not. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six, zero.
There is also a license recommended for denial. Is Mr. King here tonight? Seeing that he isn't, do we have a motion on that license this evening as well? No? Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Keahan?
I will move to deny the beverage operator license for Jacob King.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six, zero.
Item three is the second revision to the state municipal agreement for a statelet local bridge project regarding the Third Street Bridge. Is there a motion? Or would we like Director Radke, oh, Alderman Keahan?
I will move to approve the second revision to state municipal agreement for a statelet local bridge project, Wisconsin DOT, Third Street Bridge.
Here's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Radke, could you, uh, inform everyone of what the revision is?
Sure, it's a very minor revision, and, uh, in the process of finalizing the work that will be done under this contract, the DOT had asked the city if we wanted to do the, uh, some of the work to our sanitary sewer system ourselves, or have the contractor do it. It's a very small amount, coordination becomes very difficult if you try to work in there when, when the other contractor is in doing this work. So, we said, we'll have the state's contractor do the work. It's, uh, listed as a non-participating cost, meaning that the DOT will not participate in this cost, it's all a local cost, that will be billed back to the city. We're talking 700 dollars. That's what this revision is for, and we're recommending approval. We don't wanna be in there among the other contractors that will be a part of that bridge project, uh, because that can cause more problems than what this cost is worth. And it would cost us some money, some of that 700 dollars anyhow.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Director Radke, for the people at home, this is the bridge at the intersections of Brighton Drive, Third Street, and Cargus Drive, and when can they expect a timetable on that bridge?
Well, the bids will be let by the DOT in May, and then after the bids are approved by the DOT, there will be a pre-construction meeting with the contractor that will detail their schedule, proposed construction schedule, but it's anticipated that substantial completion will occur by this fall.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six, zero.
Item four is the acquisition of Realty Opus, Realty Opus Property. There's a memo in your packet. Do we have a motion tonight? Alderman Keahan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the acquisition of Realty Opus Property, 867 Valley Road, Manasha.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Well, she carried on roll call six, zero.
Item five is the purchase of the Petrie Property, North 8884 Onida Road. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keahan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the purchase of the Petrie- I'll move to approve the purchase of the Petrie Property, North 8884 Oneida Road, Menasha. Re- recommended by the planning commission.
Do we need a dollar in this motion? Okay. Motion. I just asked if we needed the dollar amount within your motion, and he said it was fine as is. So was there a second?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. Alderman Zalinski?
For the public, can we have some explanation for this?
Sure.
This is a piece of property. It's in the rear of Oneida Street. There's no Oneida Street frontage. It's primarily wetland. This would be connecting piece of property to our conservancy, and then it attaches to the QuickTrip parcel to the south. We are planning the corridor of the Province Terrace Trail to go through this property, and hence, it is needed to enable that project to move forward on the planned alignment.
Do we have easement from QuickTrip yet?
We, we've been in discussion with QuickTrip. They are favorable, but the, we don't have a purchase or contribution agreement. The expectation is that QuickTrip will be contributing their property and granting us an easement.
Okay, so this is just primarily for the trail at...
Correct. And to, and it'll really help expand our conservancy as well. So it's a six-acre piece. It's a fairly sizable piece of property. And then together with that larger piece of wetland that we're expecting QuickTrip to contribute, we'll have roughly 18 acres or so of new territory in our conservancy.
Yeah. I'm for the trail, but I'm not for the expense of running it through a wetland.
Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion, Kieran, roll call five-one.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is Resolution Five, a resolution approving the continued pursuit of acquisition of the R.R. Donnelly &amp; Sons Annap Street Property. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve R-5-16, resolution approving the continued pursuit of acquisition of the R.R. Donnelly &amp; Sons Annap Street Property.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Kyle, could you provide a brief update on where we're at with this today?
So, so the Art, the redevelopment authority has approved the development agreement that was included in your packet. The, that agreement was forwarded to R.R. Donnelly prior to the RDA meeting. We had a phone conference with the real estate director from R.R. Donnelly and their attorney prior to the RDA meeting, but they had not had a chance to sort of go over the agreement in detail. And so we may be tweaking a few things as this comes back from Donnelly to the RDA. But we did have substantive agreement on all of the provisions that were still under discussion from our former conversations with R.R. Donnelly. So if, you know, this will be sort of a process with several points where we will stop and make a determination as to whether to proceed. What this first step does is get us to a point where we will begin the environmental investigation of the property. R.R. Donnelly is to commence that at their expense, and should they decide to turn over the Phase One to the RDA, then the RDA will make a decision as to whether to proceed. And likewise, if there's additional expense that is contemplated at that time, we will need to be coming back to the county council to ask for funding to address whatever item is out there. And that may occur, you know, a couple of times in this process. There are, it's kind of like a offer to purchase a home where you would put in contingencies for financing or inspection or that kind of thing. And this agreement contains a number of those sort of stop points where you can step back and assess based on the information that has been gathered and made available, and then decide whether to proceed to the next step. So as I explained in my memo, I'm thinking it'll be June or July to get to the point where we would actually make a decision to close on the property. And then a whole nother process will have to take place with respect to, okay, now that we've got it, under what scenario do we want the demolition work to take place? Is that, and it's, and that's kind of complicated by DOT's preference for the alternative that would impact at least the office building and a portion of that one-story component of the building, and whether the demolition gets done by DOT, coincident with the highway project, or whether the city wants to accelerate that. I think those decisions would be made at a point where we actually have the property in hand, and we are ready to move forward with more information regarding where DOT stands with their project implementation.
So we're still a few steps out from actually acquiring the property. And by approving this resolution this evening, the R.R. Donnelly will start the environmental phase of what they need to do to figure out...
Right.
...what's going on there.
So we will have to schedule another meeting of the RDA to review the, the final version of this as, as sort of responded to by R.R. Donnelly. And if there's agreement on that, then the redevelopment authority would, would sign the agreement with R.R. Donnelly, which would then enable the commencement of the environmental review work. And if, if, as I mentioned, R.R. Donnelly does that environmental review, presents that to the RDA, then, then we are obliged to pay R.R. Donnelly for that work up to a maximum of $30,000. And then, then the RDA would make a decision as to whether to proceed. And if we are to proceed, additional funds will be required, and we will need, the RDA will need to be coming to the council to ask for those funds. And in the short term, there's, it would be, you know, probably in the range of, I don't know, 20 to 35,000, something in there that would be needed. We would need to pay, like, prorated share of taxes. We would need to pay some other title work and closing costs and those kinds of things. But the, the big expense associated with the property, the demolition or rehabilitation, whatever those routes we choose to take, would be made at a point further down the road. So again, I mean, what we're, what we're, what the resolution asks for is the council to sort of nod your head to say, yes, the RDA should proceed with the acquisition. And then, secondly, it, it kind of puts the council on notice that the RDA is going to be coming back to ask for at least a limited amount of funding enabled to complete the transaction.
And, and in the meantime, in this agreement, there are numerous opportunities for termination by either party.
Correct.
Okay. So in essence, this evening, we are just giving our approval that the RDA continue with the process.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Does the RDA even need this approval from us at this point yet?
Well, does the RDA, I suppose they could proceed without your approval, but, you know, the RDA and the city need to act in concert. And, and the, the RDA, although it has, you know, pretty substantial authority by statute, it needs another leg, and that's the money to, to carry it forward. And that mu, they don't have that money today. So they're going to need to keep coming back to the council and saying, well, we need this level of funding, and this is what we're going to get as a result of you funding it at this level. And, you know, every expectation is, if this proceeds, we will be forming a TIF district. And these costs that we're incurring on the front end, like this environmental work and that sort of thing, those soft costs you can incur before the creation of the TIF, but then when you start incurring hard costs, that TIF has to be in place. And we would be looking to formulate a TIF, I think, even if we didn't have a project in hand in order to be able to roll those costs in for, you know, to, to expense those costs into a TIF, to recover them in the future, once that development does take place.
My whole problem with this resolution, and it's not going to affect me, but approving the continued pursuit of acquisition, it's going to be thrown in your face at some point. I can almost guarantee it, that you approved it.
That you approved the RDA...
The continued pursuit.
Right. Well, and, I mean, we have, we've been working with Donnelly now for well over a year to get it to this point. And, and we're at a juncture now where we need to take this next step, that being, doing the environmental review, so we can make a decision as to whether we actually want to proceed with the purchase.
And the develop, or the, the review of the environment, how far are they taking it? Phase One, Phase Two?
Well, the, the Phase One is being done to the EPA's All Appropriates Inquiry Standard. And based on that Phase One, that will then recommend what areas are to be evaluated further as part of the Phase Two. And that Phase Two may include, you know, it, I can't predict what that's going to say if we're going to need to have three test pits or 20 test pits or more, you know, in order to find out what actually is on that site. And so that is a decision that gets made when the Phase One is completed, and we know the scope of investigation. And the RDA has the ability to look at that and say, is this sufficient? And then if not, we can terminate and say, okay, we need to know more, you need to do this, this, and this, and then we'll get back in it. So it's, it's going to be a stepwise kind of thing. It's not, we're not going to have all the answers upfront.
But Phase One is what?
It's, it's...
Looking around, is not drilling any holes?
No. It's, it's reviewing the historical use of the property. It's, it's interviewing people. It's viewing company records. Donnelly has done some environmental work in the past, and they've, in the agreement, committed to turn that information over. So they'll be reviewing that, and then this, the plan for the Phase Two will be developed out of that.
Yeah, I don't know about the whole, we do this, and all of a sudden, they don't find anything. We take ownership of it, we start removing the building, and we find it. Sort of like what Nina had to do with their paper mill.
Well, and...
And then all of a sudden, bang, there you are. We don't have a development.
There's a couple of things in here. One is that the, for unknown contamination, there is a liability limit of 250,000. This, we will also be seeking this voluntary party liability exemption from DNR, which will provide further protection for the city and the RDA for contamination that was present when we acquired it but was unknown. And by virtue of the fact that Donnelly is what would, in the event there were contamination there, Donnelly would be considered a viable cause. R.R. Donnelly is a viable economic entity, and they, and DNR could seek their financial contribution should the contamina, contamination that present rise to a level where remediation was deemed necessary. But, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of different prospects out there as far as what might happen and how, but I, I think we have to go through this in a stepwise fashion, and then when we get to a decision point, then say, okay, we're satisfied, or no, we need more information, or no, we're just done. And those are options that are available to us.
Are there any other offers on this property by private developer?
No. There's been, there's been some interest in the property, but to my knowledge, there's not been, there is no current offer pending. And Donnelly, you know, we, we've kind of had a commitment to work with them, and they've had a commitment to work with us. We've spent a lot of time on the staff level. We've had outside counsel involved, as has R.R. Donnelly. So both of us have quite a lot invested in getting this thing to where it is today. And, you know, they're wanting to be done with it. We're wanting to acquire this property so we can return it to productive use and do it in a manner that we have control over the process, and so that we're not, you know, our experience on the Gilbert site where that was, that was acquired by a different entity, we are still contributed 675,000 to that site, and we don't own it, and so we don't, you know, we don't have control over it. And, and it's, I think this is a much better model to proceed under.
Why do we want to take it off the tax rules?
Well...
We have no future, we don't have any plan for it. You said, there's no plan for it right now.
It's, it's...
We want to take it off the tax rules.
It's already diminished by about a third from what it was...
Yes, but it's still a lot better than the Gilbert site.
And it's only going in one direction. And then what, if somebody were to buy it, what it's likely to be is some sort of low-end use warehousing, that kind of thing. So we're, we're locking up our valuable waterfront for a low-end use for how many more years. And is that what we want for that site ultimately? I mean, there's, there's always risk, but you always still need to look at the reward and what could be there in the future.
But if it's at just the way it was, is it right now, developer comes along, or they want to build the bridge, and then they're going to buy half of it anyway?
Yeah. And what are the prospects of a developer coming along and not, you know, getting into our pocket for money? I think there, it's unrealistic to assume that that site is going to redevelop on its own into something that we would really want.
We know that the city should not be in the developer stage. We haven't done good in that.
Well, I would agree in some instances, but in other instances, I would also say that where would we be had the city not been involved in redevelopment, especially in our downtown?
We could debate that all night. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Mr. Mayor. Greg, when those stopgaps come in with the environmentals, does the council get to stop and say, we're done, we're out? Or is it the RDA that says that?
The, the agreement is with the RDA, so they would be, they would be making the decision. But as I mentioned, they would not be able to proceed without having approval of the council to spend more money. So it's, the council is a necessary partner in order to get this done.
What are the, the different points of dollars? What are we going to be okaying for with these dollars?
Well, as, as I mentioned, in, like, this year, we'd probably be looking at, you know, somewhere, the environmental assessment, that sort of, that money is being carried over. If you'll recall, we had this discussion last year where I was to use the, essentially the, the salary that Carol Holman wasn't paid for half a year to apply to this environmental review work. So, and that was $30,000. And then beyond that, we would be looking for those other expenses, which would include the proration of taxes. those other expenses, which would include the proration of taxes. We may need to have some further outside counsel. There would be some closing costs, those kinds of things. And I, I'm just thinking that would be in the range of maybe $30,000. And then the big money for the demolition would be sort of after the site was officially ours. And then there would be a decision whether we want to wait until DOT comes along, or whether we would want to undertake that ourselves.
Would Don, Donnelly take this property down by themselves? Get a clean bill of health and then the city buy it?
We, we had, when we had started conversation with Donnelly, we presented two options. One of them was the current path that we're proceeding on. They contribute the site and we take responsibility for the cleanup and take it over. The other alternative was that Donnelly would do all that work and then we would purchase the site from them for basically what, what they would have into it plus whatever. And I don't know that a number was specifically floated, but that was probably in the 550 to 600,000 dollar range. But they were not wanting to go that route. They wanted the, they, their preference was to have the city take it and then we would be responsible for the, for that work.
You know, the climate in the state is for, for business and for large corporations and you think it'd be best for them to handle it instead of the city. We're kind of held at a different level compared to private corporations. So what is the, what is the goal here? Is it demolition?
Well, I mean, the, the, the goal is to acquire the site for redevelopment. And there's, again, depending on what happens with the bridge, that, that would impact the redevelopment of the site. There are other components of the building, that far west end, could that be rehabbed into some other sort of use, possibly. But I think what we'd need to do is, once we have control of the site and know what its future is with regard to the bridge project, then we can begin soliciting proposals for redevelopment.
You know, I talked with the realtor and, you know, they have no problem with walking through the building with, with anybody that we want to walk through to look at it. And it was last July that I mentioned that that west end of that building is, is hap- what's happening there, with that type of structure is happening down in Milwaukee, Racine, Kenosha, Chicago. I mean, it's happening at an alarming rate. And for us, not to least look at that option, at least for that back half of that building.
I don't disagree with that at all. I think that's, you know, that, that should be explored, you know, in the context of the whole site. And, and should that make sense, then I think, you know, we should proceed in that way. There's, and there's, I mean-
Because I'm thinking that the determination has already been made and I don't know where that determination came from, just demolish the building. I think there should be a shared conversation here and that we all have our input on that.
Correct. And where's the money going to come from for demolition? It'll be you eight that will be making that decision. So that consideration will have to be taken into account if that demolition proposal is brought forward.
So, and if this, this body have any say on that back half of that building, that west end of the building, that we think that we should be looking at this for high-end loft apartments, underground parking, or inside parking, and other areas in the inside that structure that could be used for that type of development. It's all there. I mean, the, the garage doors are there, the parking area is there. You know, it's, it's, and then there's a, a nice parking lot on the west side that would be a guest parking lot too. And it's, the infrastructure's all there.
Well, and, you know, there's those considerations. There's also the consideration of, you know, how are we going to access that site once the Curtis Reed Bridge there is gone as well? And so that will have to play into how that site is redeveloped.
I don't know why that would impact the west end of that property.
Well, the access would likely align with the street there. I mean, that's, would be a logical place to bring the street in to then access the, that island finger of Donnelly. And so, I mean, it wouldn't impact that whole parking area, but if that option were selected. But I think we're getting, you know, we'll head into the design here, but I, where I would like to-
I'll just get into the use.
Where I'd like to leave is that the redevelopment authority, if this proceeds and everything kind of pans out in a favorable way, the redevelopment authority will own that site. And there will need to be a decision made as far as what is the recommended future use of that site. And if the recommendation is that it needs to be cleared, they will need to come back to the council and ask for resources to clear it. If the recommendation is to redevelop the site, saving that building, that likewise will have to come back. But this body will be involved in the decision as far as what happens in the future with that property.
And why can't we get ahead of the curve and ask some of these developers from Milwaukee or to come up and take a look at it? What would that hurt, that west end of the building?
Well, you have, I think you need to look at the site in its entirety. There's about five acres there. And it, it should be viewed comprehensively. How does one element of the site relate to the other? And just to pick out that piece of it, well, that may hinder, you know, how the rest of the site is developed. So I, I think the thing to do is-
I think there's-
Assuming the RDA is able to acquire it, then they could put out requests for proposals for development of the site, which would ostensibly include site clearance and build new, or, or having an element of rehabilitation and reuse.
To me, it sounds like there's been discussion and a plan on what you guys think this property's going to be. If you, the way you just described it now, do we need to go in closed session and talk about this?
Well, we've-
Talk about this?
No. I mean, we've thought about, okay, what happens when the bridge goes away? How are we going to access that other property? And that was, I mean, that concept of having another bridge there is not necessarily new. We've talked about that in the development of the Gilbert site, how that area would be accessed.
You could put that bridge through on the street, on Oak Street. You don't have to worry about that west end of the lot on, what street is that?
Nassau Street.
Nassau.
Nassau Street.
Yeah, I mean, but it's just that access, I think, should occur at one of those intersections.
I like options. And I think we'd be short-sighted not to begin to have someone come through and, and take a look at that and say, "This is what we think we can do. This is what it would probably cost." And I, I just think for that whole site, and that's just one element of the site. I agree with you. The, the site's a beautiful piece of property. And, but I think the loft apartments with the water access there would be, and the indoor parking. And you could even put a tennis court inside there if you wanted for that development or whatever. It's all, it's all there. And let's remember, that was a, a printing company from many years ago. And printing companies have a lot of solvents. And I hope there are good stewards of that and that we don't have a, a, a lot of- Ground, groundwater issues or anything on the property. But I would really like to see us move ahead with this and talk, talk to developers about it as we're, as the environmental issues are, are moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. Greg, if we get to the point that we acquire this property and we don't have the money to tear it down, what's the holding cost on this piece of property?
Well, the main holding costs right now relate to the fact that they're required to keep heat in the building for the fire suppression. I did have discussion with Assistant Chief Green about terminating that requirement. And if, he told me if the property is completely secured, that we could, we could turn that off, or we could discontinue heating it. And so our, our holding cost would basically be the foregone taxes that we're collecting today.
Taxes.
And I don't know what kind of insurance implications, you know, vacant buildings are maybe a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have, we did have a motion in a second, correct? We have a roll call vote on that, please.
Motion carried on roll call 5-1.
Item two is Resolution Six, approving a property tax rescission. Do we have a motion? Alvin Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve our dash six dash 16, Resolution Approving a Property Tax Rescission, introduced by Mayor Murkis.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Should we have discussion, Becky?
Yes. Director Sino, could you explain what's happening here? Thank you.
So this is a property that the Department of Transportation purchased from a private homeowner at the end of, near the end of 2014. An electronic sales transfer never, did not come through. So the assessor was unaware of it when setting the values for 2015. When it became apparent, it was already, the rule had already been certified. So then this would be the appropriate method to rescind those taxes. The total on the property tax bill is 4,182 of that in the memo. 2,470 is not the city's. So the difference of approximately 1,712 would be the city's. So, and then the rescission process, it's a charge, charge back process through the Department of Revenue that happens in October of each year. Depending, right now, there's actually legislation out there. But right now, the Department of Revenue has a choice on whether they allow the charge back to happen, or if they decide to just adjust the equalized values for the future years. So we don't know if we would get this back or not.
Okay. So am I correct to understand that this was more than likely a paperwork jam up because of a property transfer?
It is. And it also has to do with a tax exempt buyer buying it. The forms go through a different, a little bit differently in that case. And I, I've been trying to brainstorm with the assessor on how we can prevent something like this in the future. But somehow, you know, the easy answer is if the county maintains property ownership, but of course, that's not very likely. So the next thing would be some kind of review of one database to another to try to catch some of these things sooner. So we've been looking into those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing done, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0.
Item three is Resolution Seven. It's a resolution on the weight of the Fox Valley. Do we have a motion? It's you, Will.
Yeah.
Did you find it?
No.
Here. Here you go.
Found it.
Give him that as well. Give him that one as well. That's the one that goes with it.
Thank you. All right. You want me to read the whole thing here?
No, 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 just, just the title.
Like to make a motion to approve Resolution on Weight of the Fox Valley.
So there's a motion in a second to approve Resolution 716 regarding the Resolution on the Weight of the Fox Valley. Is there any discussion? Alderman Tay- Taylor?
Just like to ask Mr. Kropkeimer, who, who authored this. And I know we had a letter from Director McKenney on this, but where did this document come from?
As far as I know, it came from Director. So could you-
Good evening.
Enlighten us. Thank you.
So the Weight of the Fox Valley is an initiative that helps, it exists and helps residents in Calumet, Outagame, and Winnebago Counties to achieve and maintain a healthy weight. As you all know, it's pretty significant. We have a problem in the Fox Valley with over half of our residents who are overbe- overweight or obese. And the rate of Wisconsin residents who are obese has more than doubled in the last 24 years. Obesity-related conditions do impact physical and mental health, but they also take an economic toll on our society. About 3.1 billion per year in Wisconsin, and it's going up. But the good news is that we have assets in Manassas that we can promote along with other members of Weight of the Fox Valley. That would actually help to make it easier for our residents to control and achieve a healthy weight and a healthy lifestyle. So when you think about the city of Manassas and its place on the water, we're really poised to make a difference and also assist Weight of the Fox Valley in ma- making a collective impact. We have scenic parks and accessible biking and pedestrian trails. We have waterfront activities that promote a healthy lifestyle. And just as you heard all evening, there's a lot of careful planning that goes into making a community that's conducive to a healthy lifestyle. We can offer those trails and pedestrian linkages so that people can walk to their destinations, including work. So by supporting this resolution, you're going to join others, especially those in Weight of the Fox Valley, to promote the sound planning and the assets that this community has to offer. Folks in the Weight of the Fox Valley include the health systems, Winnebago, Calumet, and Outagame Counties, City of Appleton Health Departments, City of Manassas Health Departments, Winnebago County Health Department, and the United Ways of the Fox Cities. So it's, it's a, it's a large undertaking. And what we would be doing is joining with others and promoting that kind of lifestyle. No pun intended. You got it.
So what does this mean to us? Staff time, dollars?
Actually, we have staff that's already on this initiative through working on our prevention grants that come through the Department of Health Services. I am on the leadership team and we have two public health nurses. One works on the wellness team and another works on community wellness. So it's, it's, it's making an impact and integrating it throughout the community without necessarily having to fund it because you're already doing it. Your trails, your bike trails and pedestrian trails are that built environment that you're going to want to promote through these activities. So it's more of a promotion. And then just really thinking about the impact that your decisions and planning have on making a healthier lifestyle, or making it available to have a healthier lifestyle for your residents.
So the number five on the bottom, the, the policy and the program recommends, recommendations found in the Appleton Transportation Management Area and the Oshkosh Metropolitan Planning Organization Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, what does that mean to us? We don't have that document.
Well, East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission is in Manassas and we work with them. I don't know if you'd like to say a little bit about our work with them or?
Well, just, the MPO is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And East Central Regional Planning is designated for that function by the Department of Transportation. And as part of that MPO designation, they have responsibilities to put together this bike and pedestrian plan that covers the region, which includes us. And there's input that- And there's input that is sought from the communities as they work through that process.
I had a few people ask me to meet with them this weekend. They called me on this, and they think it's all part of the United Nations Agenda 21, which, you know, gets thrown into this regional government, and is it any part of this UN Agenda 21?
No, actually, part of the work we do as a health department is community assessment. And when we look at some of our surveys, it's very clear that this is a priority. And our community has made a commitment to be the place on the water and to promote that healthy lifestyle. So it isn't a bigger agenda than our area, but I can tell you that probably the state and the nation share this concern. We are just working together in the Fox Valley to make a collective impact on this issue by promoting our natural assets and our built environment that you've worked so hard to do.
I don't know what the recommendations that are found in the Appleton Transportation Management Area documents and the Oshkosh Metropolitan documents.
If you'd, if you'd like, I can post it on the website. It is about 233 pages, but it's very sound planning and in alignment with what we are already doing.
Okay. And in this, you never heard anything about the UN Agenda 21?
I've, I've heard of Healthy People 2020, and I've heard of Healthy Wisconsin 2020, and that's what we work with. I'm sure there is a UN agenda.
Would you mind if we held this for two weeks and look, so we can see what this guy wants to say?
Sure, I'd be more than happy to do that.
And, you know, something else to this, you know, we use, you know, your place on the water and this community, well, two weeks after we adopted the, your place on the water, the community turned down a waterfront off-road trail by the sewage plant, and I think that's kind of ironic, and then... And that, when we, tonight, we did an off-road trail, but we don't follow that. So your place on the water, we threw that under the bus two weeks after we adopted that with turning down the trail behind the sewage plant. So it's, it's all good words and things, but it's not what this body's following up here. And it's unfortunate, just one meeting after, that we throw that under the bus. I would love, pass if we table this for two weeks.
So you'd like to make a motion to postpone this item?
Postpone table.
Till the, do we have a date on the next council meeting?
21st.
The March 21st Common Council meeting. Is there a second?
I have a second. I have some questions.
I'll hold off on that till you're done. I'll yield to you, Alderman Zalinski.
Thank you. I know half the problem is admitting that there's a problem. When did we, my whole problem with this is, we're talking about bike trails and stuff, and this is going to be thrown back in the Alderman's faces when they want to bring a bike trail down their street and they don't want it, and we're going to say, this is what we approved. You're going to say, we approved that we should put bike trails in. I'm not against this stuff, but this is your roundabout way of getting into that, because some feder, Bicycle Federation's going to show up and say, you guys approved this? Now where's our bike trails? Because our bike trails are hopscotched all through the city.
I would agree that we could update our bike trails and do better, but that was not the intent of this.
It's not at this point.
True.
But then all of a sudden, they're going to say, well, it says some of our bike trails in here, and now you're going to say, we don't want a bike trail here? Well, you guys made a resolution that says, yes, you should put a bike trail in. I'm not against this, the people losing weight. I don't know how they came up with this 24 or 50 percent. They must have a chip in everybody's scale at their house or something. Or did they poll everybody?
They did.
This is a model resolution that Director McKenney brought forward to me about a week or so back?
Yep, and we adapted it and tailored it to our community, which other communities are doing also, because they're strongly in support of promoting physical activity so that...
I'm not against that at all, but all of a sudden, they're going to say, well, Manassas doesn't have enough bike trail, their streets aren't light enough, let's put them in. And then we're going to have this problem, hey, you guys said, put bike trails in.
And if there's something you'd like to change in this that would make you more comfortable, that's fine, we have no problems with that. What this is really meant to do is to promote the fact that we have a lot of good infrastructure here already in Manassas, and hopefully help the other communities help promote us as part of the concept here, so that people know we have these things and can use those things. It's not about building more, it's about promoting what we already have.
Right, I think the term that we originally saw was support, which means something a little bit different than promote, and so we chose to put the term promote in, which would be mutually beneficial for both us and the folks around the table that want Weight of the Fox Valley.
Yeah, but I just, I just see what all these other communities are going through when they want to promote a bike trail through some residential areas. It really gets contentious with the neighbors on which side does the bike trail go on?
Sure.
And there's going to be a push for it. I know it's coming, and they're going to say, here it is. You guys are overweight, let's get you moving.
If there's ways you want to tailor this, we can definitely go there and talk. Sure. Okay. Alderman Kropkramer?
I think someone that we could use as an ally here is former Alderman person, Rollins Jump, who's in the health field in Appleton. She's been promoting this for a little longer than we've had it on the table. I've talked to her a little bit about it, I didn't have a lot of time. I'm getting ahold of her tomorrow, and see what, what their plans are and what they're thinking about in her city that she works in, and see if they can help us out. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
There's a 230-page document tied to this I want to, I want to take a look at, and maybe we need to remove item five from this document, so we're not tied in with what Alderman Zalinski's talking about. You know, the bike trails won't be a problem until it goes through the rich, wealthy people's neighborhood. Then, then it'll stop. But the poor people, we just rode right over them down on Matheson Street, and didn't even care about them, let's just put it in. So, but when we get to the rich man's neighborhood, then, then it'll stop.
I'm going to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to postpone till the next meeting, March 21st.
So there's, there's a motion a second to post? I think you need, you need a second, yes. So there's a motion a second to postpone Resolution Seven to the March 21st meeting. Is there discussion on postponing the item? Alderman Taylor, did you, did you want to discuss postponing, Alderman Taylor, or did you just not turn your light on?
I'll blame you.
Okay. No? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, could we have, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote then, so we can record it correctly.
Motion carried on roll call 4-2.
Item L is appointments. There are two. There's the reappointment of Tom Grady to the Landmarks Commission. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the mayor's reappointment of Tom Grady, 999 Brighton Drive, Manassas, to the Landmarks Commission for the term of 3/116 to 3/119.
There's a motion a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second is an appointment of Patricia Irwin to the Committee on Aging. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the mayor's appointment of Patricia Irwin, 1028 Southfield Drive, Manassas, to Committee on Aging for the term of 3/116 to 2/119.
A motion a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Can we prevent the aging?
We, we have been having a little discussion on potentially changing the name of the committee, because no one really wants to be on the Committee on Aging. This is the committee that manages the senior center programming, so it may have a different name sometime in the future. All those in favor of the appointment?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comment on any matter that was on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Joanne Roush, 409 Cleveland Street. You know, I wasn't going to get up, there were a lot of things that I would have loved to have commented on, but, you know, I don't do that anymore. But I have to, I have to say, just for the sake of Nancy McKinney, who does such great work with population that certain people here profess to have a lot of concern about, which is poor people in Manassas. Nancy does a lot of work with poor people. And I just want to tell her, because I don't think she knows, that Agenda 21 is the conspiracy theorist's favorite bugaboo. It is a sustainable development initiative that is worldwide, it's international, has nothing to do with the Weight of the Fox Cities. The Weight of the Fox Cities is about, the Weight of the Fox Cities is initiative of the United Way. That never got mentioned, I was listening very carefully. The United Way started this several years ago to help manage the health problems and consequences, and the social and cultural consequences of this rampant obesity. And hey, you know, here I am. I'm just saying, it has nothing to do with international conspiracy theories, or Tea Party politics, or any of this nonsense. And really, please, you all need, wherever it's coming from, it needs to stop, because coming to a Manassas council meeting is like stepping into an alternate universe. The craziness is so thick in here, you can cut it with a knife, and it does make us look silly. And the last thing I want to say is, thank you very much for going forward with the Walkway Project. I think that was the right decision, not only because we need to create a sense of place in Manassas, we need to have these beautiful little places like other cities do, where one can just say, wow, that's nice, I think I'll sit down and eat my ice cream cone there. But we also do need to honor our commitments, and I think that that's become more and more of a question in people's minds, in the business community. We can't say we're all about business, we can't say that we're moving forward together as a community. If we can't honor agreements and a process, you know, and we're not always going to win, we're not always going to be happy with the outcome, you know? Nobody wins all the time, but you have to be gracious about it, and when the time has come to move on, you have to move on. That's the way this is supposed to work, guys. So thank you very much, that's all I have to say.
Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
There's a motion a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Do you want to go?